Welcome to the Barnes Ferry Special Counsel Room for November the ninth, 2022. First item on the agenda under Old Business is discuss and consider the contract for new full court manager. We have the current contract here. You want to?
Yeah, so the contract that's in front of you is not the current contract, it's the master contract that's to ask and working on. So I say that because in the previous council packet that we discussed this issue, you did have the contract on our current contractor. So there is some differences between those two simply because there's some things that aren't necessary to put in the contract. So with that, what I wanted to do was point to my memo that I provided to council with regards to the bullet points, council directed staff to meet with the outgoing contractor, which we did, Mayor and I, as well as one of the council members met with the contractor and went through. And I bulleted those areas that we felt were worthy of discussion here tonight. And provided not only those comments, but a response to them based on staff's opinion. And I say that as a, it is staff's opinion now, council can certainly take that under consideration and render your own opinion. But those are my opinions as your staff. So with that, what I'll do is go through those bullet points and respond, my response to them if you're comfortable, or if you feel as though you have a good handle on that, you can certainly just jump into the contract. But my thought is that we would go through the major points of the contract and amend those sections should you have thoughts or considerations that you wish to discuss amongst yourselves. But I do have it up on the screen here. Unfortunately, don't have it on Zoom just because the latency between the Zoom here and to be able to show it here makes it really difficult. So there's usually a lag, sometimes thirty seconds to a minute. And so, you know, with Andrew Kay being, my thought was the only one that was going to be on there. I felt like she had to, since I had access to it, she could have blew it. But if council wishes for me to put it on there, I would take the amendment. But otherwise, it's on the screen here and then you have it in your packet. If you're ready, what would you like me to do? Would you like me to go through the memo?
Yeah, I would. That way everybody knows you're on the same machine.
So as we met with the golf contractor, it was to get his comments on the contract as it operated in his care or operation at Mary Lake. So the first comment that was discussed or one of, these aren't necessarily in order of our discussion. So I want to make sure that I understand that. That the base rate should be increased to attract the attention of PGA pros. It was his opinion that the base rate wasn't enough to pay his employees out of the wages, although he did have employees who accepted the position for ten to fifteen dollars an hour.
It was ten to eleven. He never paid anybody fifteen. Just want that corrected.
With that, I do want to make the comment that, you know, one of the things I didn't address in my memo was the fact that it wasn't my understanding that this contract was trying to attract PGA pros. That said, my response to that under the bullet point that you charged it there, that starts at the bottom of the first page, it says, first relating to the base rate, it is the opinion of staff that if council were to consider increasing the base rate, they do so cautiously. The current contract is set to incentivize the contractor to bring in more rounds of golf with an eighty-twenty split of proceeds. By raising the base rate and adjusting the split either hundred to zero or ninety to ten, the results may not change provided the play remains the same. However, if an increase to the base rate occurs and no adjustments are needed to the split, the city could end up losing all of its revenue that he used to invest back into the course. Staff has provided council with a twenty-three-year profit-loss report with capital risk contained. If each year there were a high level of surplus after capital spending and saving, then it might be wise to adjust the base rate to attract more interest in the position. However, if you review the property loss statement again over the twenty-two-year period excluding this last season, the total profit of the course is roughly a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, or seventy-five hundred dollars per year. Over that same period, there were six years where the course ran out of loss, six years where the expenses were ninety percent or greater than the revenue, and eight of those years where expenses ran between eighty-two and eighty-nine percent. Of that same timeframe, only four years have revenues less than eighty percent of expenses. This meant that if council were to increase the base rate and keep the same profit sharing, expenses would certainly go up and the city would find it much more difficult to support the golf course on only the revenue it makes, much less turning capital into revenue. This would likely lead to the taxpayers supporting the golf course due to profit and expense. I'll leave that there. If you wish to debate that or if you want me to continue on, go to the next bullet point.
I'm waiting. What else is?
Yep.
Next bullet point, the contract, I believe the section relating to the driving range, section three, B five should be reworked. It was his opinion that the city should, should allow the contractor to use city-owned equipment to maintain the driving range, but did not offer any suggestion of cost-sharing or revenue sharing. Based on his recollection, he was receiving somewhere around eight to nine thousand per year in revenue, but his costs gave up any quote pocket for him. I asked if he had submitted his property loss statements for twenty-one, twenty-three through those two, those would be three-year time frames. So of course, we haven't received a twenty-three yet because it's not fifteen double hundred. But he responded he didn't remember. So I'm sorry, I skipped my summary of the first bullet. But the first bullet point says, in the end, the only way the city can pay more to a golf contractor is to either increase the revenues by increasing the cost of play or by increasing the revenue. So the next bullet point, the existing contractor felt the driving range section should be reworked. It was his opinion that limiting the use of city-owned equipment on the course was a big, quote, "big red flag" to future professionals looking to target the course. It was the opinion of the former mayor who's here tonight, just if there's questions, you can certainly ask the two of us, that subsidizing the profit of an independent contractor was not in the interest of the city. That is to say, if the city were to allow the contractor to use city equipment on the portion of course that was not receiving any value back from rental revenue share, meant that the residents were subsidizing the bottom line of that contractor. According to the golf contractor, he receives roughly eight to nine thousand each year of the driving range, and it was his contention that there is no business market that supports purchasing a piece of equipment to maintain that portion of course, given the profit margin that's made off the range. However, with the range, the golf contractor can sell time on the range as well as offer lessons. And it's staff's opinion that undoubtedly, the range does offer the contractor a fuller experience of the course that would not, that it would not have if it wasn't served. Currently, the golf contractor, in order to get around this particular contract terms, has extended the bounds of play as it needs to address the issue, and he still uses the city-owned equipment to maintain that course boundaries. The optics of subsidizing a private business profit or bottom line needs to be equalized with the public's interests. While the staff has no real great suggestions here, never council lands on an issue to be addressed, both the functional use of the range with the contractor's business and business model or plan, and the public's interests. Returning to a profit-sharing model may be the best solution to achieve the end result. However, there may be other suggestions amongst the council members that would consider. Next bullet point, under section three C seven relating to the responsibility for the electric costs borne by the contractor, he felt it wouldn't be liked by applicants. However, he acknowledged that during the last four years, it has been fine for him. So all right, next, the bullet point made is the requirement the golf contractor gave that electric bill for the clubhouse, I can say with absolute confidence, but this requirement should stay with the future golf contractor. There were years where staff had inspected closure of the clubhouse in late fall or early winter and finding that the golf contractor had left lights on in the building, his personal food and beverage plugged in and kept out there along with his personal carts plugged in. The electric bill was extremely high for the later months with no activity occurring. It became apparent that that was because the city was paying the electricity for the building. Contractor was using that for storing his personal slash business belongings. Since the burden has shifted back to the contractor, it costs savings to the public as per this staff's recommendation that the contract, that this section was made on the contract. The last, the next bullet point says, jumping to the last one regarding section eight, breach of contract terms. The contractor felt this section was also a big red flag to future professionals. It was also the golf contractor's opinion that this section was new from the previous contract. However, after review of the 2014 contract, the section referenced was section eleven, not section eight. So that contract, those were still, terms are in there. And after discussion with the attorney, does not appear the section should be removed and thus likely stays as part of the future contract. I'll summarize my last remarks so then we can open the discussion and can direct staff as to what changes you would like to make within the contract. But outside the bullet points listed above, the golf contractor reckons that opening in our conversation of the existing contract would prevent a reasonable golf professional from being interested in the contract. In fact, the contractor referenced more than once that, quote, "no one would be interested in the position by way of the current contract's construction." However, if it doesn't work or hasn't worked, then why would the golf contractor continue to operate at Mary Lake if the contract wasn't lucrative enough? I argue while there may be some areas that could be addressed or improved, the contract has worked and will continue with the future contractor. This is only more substantiated with the sales numbers that the golf contractor himself provided that are used as part of the, excuse me, job announcement. Sales in this, quote, "sales from the driving range, cart rental, golf course, fees, merchandise, food and beverage and other small miscellaneous are as follows: 2019, two-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-one; 2020, two-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-one; 2021, three-hundred-and-forty-three-eight-forty-nine; 2022, three-hundred-and-seventy-seven-two-thirty-one; and 2023, year-to-date." So this is likely through, not through the end of the year, but through a portion of the year, four-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-four. As council will note, with the new contract went into effect, the first year's sales increased twenty-seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-seven over the previous year and was up seventy-two-thousand-five-hundred following year. These are year-over-year ends, not, not a cumulative crude. Again, in 2022, sales increased thirty-three-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-two over the previous year. And while we don't have final numbers yet this year, sales are up five-hundred and, or excuse me, fifty-two-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-two over the previous year. If you look at the overall sales from 2020 to 2023, the overall sales increased by a hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-two. While this might not directly point to the fact that the contract caused this, it most certainly can be shown that the contract did not prevent success for the contractor at Mary Lake. With that said, staff recommends council be cautious about making sweeping changes to this contract and limit any financial burden on the city property taxpayers to make up the shortcomings that benefited the contractor. With that, I turn the floor back over.
You're saying the contract change that was done is directly responsible for the upturn in golf.
No, it's not. That's absolutely what he did not say. He said it did not prevent the success of the golf contractor.
In spite of the new contract, it still did, yeah. Okay, right. Makes sense.
Go ahead.
No, just, can you go through a couple of things that? Okay, you've got a highlighted section, it'd be section one N. "In no event shall the operator alter or improve any portion of the golf course except otherwise expressly permitted under this agreement." So exactly what does that mean? It means nothing can be done out of the golf course to improve it?
Well, the contract does allow for agreements to be done with the golf contractor under permission by the city council.
Okay, so it needs to say that there, or does it say that somewhere else?
It says out elsewhere in the contract.
Okay. Where is that? I mean, that looks... I know there's been a lot of improvements done out there and your golf committee and friends of Mary Lake are directly responsible for those improvements.
It's section one, is it B? Actually, it's G, section, I'm not really... Under general conditions, it's section B.
No, that's just recommended changes in the B structure.
Okay, sorry.
I'm not talking about fee structure, I'm talking about improvements, physical improvement.
F says, "The operator and golf committee shall maintain effective communication of the overall operation of each golf club, clubhouse."
As it stands, that's a pretty damaging statement. Unless you have somewhere else in here that counteracts that, I doubt you'd say that needs stricken from the contract.
Well, I think when, when that, that group out there wanted to do work on their golf course, didn't they always come here with permission to do it?
Pretty much, yeah. But I mean, this says, it can't happen.
Oh, that's they get permission.
Doesn't say that in here. It's got to say.
Well, it says, "All requests of data relevant to the operation, success or failure of the business shall be provided to the city by the operator upon request from the mayor, city council, city clerk, city attorney, or city administrator." That's under the data section. Right there, B one. So, okay. So. And if you need to clarify that, I think the intent there was to ensure that there were proper...
Proper channels to go through.
Right. I would not suggest striking it. I would suggest elaborating.
Yeah, and making it, yeah, to not, you're not making it to where you can't do improvements on the course through the proper channels, which is the way it's always meant.
But I think the challenge before was that those proper channels weren't acknowledged by the contractor and those, to a certain degree, weren't coming back through the city for those proper optimizations. So I think acknowledging that that was an area of strength that would be valuable to this contract.
Okay, and then you go to driving range. That would be section three, three, A three.
How about page numbers?
Page five, bottom, very bottom, number three. "The operator shall collect all driving range fees and shall be entitled to retain twenty percent of these fees collected. Eighty percent shall be remitted to the city for the use of city mowers and other maintenance materials relating to the operation of the driving range." So, does this mean that the city now is taking responsibility for buying balls, ball collection, ball washing, mowing? Is the city taking that responsibility and then the contractor will get twenty percent? Or is the contractor have to buy the balls, buy the mats, do all of that, collect balls, wash them, market them for twenty percent? That, that doesn't make sense.
So yeah, that, that, this was the previous contract prior to the one that the golf contractor had. So that was the language that was previous to the existing contract, was that right, Mr.?
So I'm confused. What contract are we trying to deal with here now? Is this not it?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand the question.
If this, is this the contract you're trying to put forth?
This is the contract that was previous to the existing contract. We mod, we went back, we did not transfer all the new information that the current contract has. We went back on, mainly because we couldn't find the document.
Because I thought that, Dave, you were involved in negotiations of that last contract and I thought it was all going one hundred percent to the contractor, which I don't really necessarily agree with that.
Yeah, it was, I think the 2014 version, Ralph, got the contract about all the revenue, but it also stated that he was responsible for all of the maintenance. So we gave him a choice of splitting the revenue or getting the mowers and doing the maintenance. And he said, "I prefer to get the mowers and do the maintenance." So that's why it stayed at a hundred percent.
But that doesn't say that here.
No, I, I'm not, this might have been an earlier version, 2014.
Well, that's what I'm trying to come to here. Which contract are we putting forward here to advertise for a job?
It's clear that's what we're here tonight, to resolve.
Okay, okay. So I would recommend that we take a hard look at that. Maybe, well, if I was a contractor, I would be okay with the city taking eighty percent if they did all the work and all the balls and all the mats and, and all the labor involved in maintaining it. That'd be okay with me, I think.
But the city is not going to be able to do that.
Well, no.
Well, if I can interject something here.
Sure, you bet.
If you go to page seven and under five C, driving range fees, it says, "The operator should be fully responsible for the maintenance operations of the driving range, including the collecting of all sales and proceeds. Operator shall use its own equipment to perform maintenance on the driving range and should not utilize city materials, goods, or equipment in the course of such maintenance."
Right.
So it's kind of a hundred and eighty degrees off of what the other thing says, so.
Yeah, that was a whole other.
Well, this, this is saying that he, the, the manager is responsible for all the balls, all of the maintenance and everything, and getting twenty percent.
So that's, correct that, do that.
That's.
Maybe you need to choose a lane on that one.
Yes, exactly.
This is just presenting both of those options based on the previous 2014 contract. What happened was, we could not find a word document from that document, so we tried to go back in and add that language based on that. It's good, there's some areas.
But this is, yeah.
So that was a little bit of an existing contract.
So we need to, we need to come up with a plan here then, is what you're saying, that will work. What's that?
So I wonder if I have the 2014 contract. We have the 2014 one. We do. We just didn't have the 2019 one. Twenty-nine and we're, we're working on it.
I mean, I'm not in favor of the, like, Dave, like, I'm not in favor of the hundred percent thing. Because all that did was take a portion of the course that was driving range and now we're making it inbound, so you have to use city equipment to maintain it and get a hundred percent of proceeds. So I'm not totally in favor of that either. No. This is a, this is kind of a, it's a money issue. It's a...
So what are, what are you getting at? What are you in favor of?
Well, you could go one way or the other. You could go eighty percent for the contractor and he's responsible for balls, mats, picking up balls, cleaning balls, mowing the grass. He's responsible for all of that. And then the city gets twenty percent, and that way he can use city equipment to mow it. And that should cover that. I, I'm getting a head nod back there, Dave. I don't know. You, you know numbers a little better than I do, I think. I'm, I'm kind of, kind of shooting in the dark a little bit, hoping somebody that has numbers in their head will, will say it's okay or not.
I think that sounds better than the other two.
Yes, yeah. I didn't like the hundred percent, and I don't like the twenty percent and then having to provide everything. Give the contractor eighty percent and he provides everything it takes to maintain this driving range.
It sounds like the city's mowers are going to get used up either way.
Yes.
So.
I was going to say, was there some kind of an issue with the city's mowers with the driving range here or something?
Well, yeah, it's...
If it's going to get used, we might as well get, we might as well get.
Might as well get some compensation for it. So I would like to see eighty percent go to the contractor, twenty percent to the city. And the city's only responsibility for that driving range is allowing the, the mowers to be used to mow it. Everything else is pretty much contractor responsibility. Balls, mats, collection of balls, go up on the hillside, hunt for balls, go down to swamp, hunt for balls. It's an expensive proposition for, you lose a lot of. But yeah, so I, I kind of like that. Don't go by my word.
What did Ralph operate on last year?
Oh, it's, it was, it was hundred percent and it, it, it turned into a, I didn't like.
What do you mean, a hundred percent?
He got a hundred percent of the driving range.
Ralph did?
Yes, but he wasn't supposed to use city equipment to mow it. He had to get his own mower to mow it. So instead of that, he made that portion of the golf course inbound. So it's playable grounds and has to be maintained. Now, back when this course started, that was inbound. That changed when Dan Robertson and he went out to a driving range that Vic Ray ran and Vic gave up on it and had all these nets and poles and Dan gathered them up and took them down there and put them on the course. That, then, then we had the driving range. That's how that started. And so that made that portion out of bounds. But you had nets to divide it. Now you don't have that. So makes it kind of difficult. And it also adds, when you, when you make that portion of the golf course inbound, now you've got carts driving out there and some people just don't quit hitting balls on the driving range and you're out there trying to find your ball.
Absolutely.
And it's a, it's a, I can't say it, it's... There it is. It's terrible. It's... Personally, I'd like to see nets go back up, but we can't afford that. That's a, that's a no-go.
Just go almost, I, there wasn't even a range.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Driving ranges are a vital part of the course. It's how you take your junior leagues and you teach them and you coach them and you take them to the range and that's where they are.
They're making changes on that.
Yeah, I'm just going to do it on my own.
Okay. I have my soapbox on that.
Okay.
I think it's clear as mud.
No, that, that was very clear.
Okay.
So. All right, I highlight you this, and what I'll do is I'll try to copy what you guys were talking about and I would like the chance to work with the city attorney to make sure the language is sufficient. Kind of try to capture it here. You should be, but we should be aware of safety of our...
There needs to be, it needs to be addressed. It does. And I think through signage and education, when you hand balls to somebody to get into the driving range, you tell them, "Don't hit anybody." When somebody pulls up down in the fairway and they're within your range, quit hitting and wait. And put signs down there to that effect. That never happens. And those people have got hit and it's just not a good, not a good situation. Actually, you know, another note, since COVID, COVID kind of started all this and our, our course never closed. It's one of few around the area that didn't close. Ralph just, he got ingenious and he put in some things, like he put a little plastic collar in the cup. So when you hit that collar, it's in. So nobody's reaching down in grabbing them off. And the flag stayed in. You hit the flag, you're in. And if you had anything within the club head length, it's considered good. You don't have to butt it in. So there was some rules put in to keep people from interacting and touching surfaces that somebody else would touch. So he got pretty ingenious and he kept that course going. And it did nothing but go up from then. It really picked up right then and kept going and everybody discovered it's such a nice course and we've got a lot of people moving in and it's nothing but getting more and more popular. Golf trends, it, over the years, it's trended down, it's trended up, it's trended down. And right now, I'm thinking it's on an upswing. And that's a lot of the money differences in the last two, three years, I think. And anyway, contract differences, I don't see that affecting much. Like you said, Lisa, it really didn't affect one way or the other. I think it was, and also Ralph did a wonderful job of presenting that course as really nice now. I mean, it's just gotten nothing but nicer every year. And when somebody comes and plays and you play on a nice course, you will be back. You will keep coming back. And that's, that's the key. You've got to get somebody in and we need to get somebody in pretty quickly so they can learn from Ralph before he vacates the area. There's a lot to learn. Okay? Done.
Did you have anything else?
Nope, not right now.
Okay.
I'll keep thinking.
Do you have anything to add to itself or what we're going to talk about or?
I didn't have anything to add to the contract itself.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I just wanted to kind of get one little more highlight that we have in here. Times, May first through May thirty-first, eight-thirty AM to six-thirty PM. We're talking about hours that the course is open and that somebody should be in the clubhouse and ready to go. That's being pretty lenient. I go out there and golf a lot of times when, like in... I go out there and golf a lot of times when, like in August, it's six, six thirty in the morning and there's a lot of people there. So I'm almost, I almost think we need to work those hours over a little bit. That's just kind of a small point, but just the same, if you're gonna hold somebody's feet to the fire about being there, you've got to have something written proper that makes sure that they are there and you have something to back it up. Cause there's a lot of rounds got played out there early in the morning and didn't get paid for, I'm sure of. I don't know quite what to say there as far as actual times we should implement.
I was gonna say how many of those rounds though were being played by people that didn't have season passes?
Yeah. So that's what I'm saying.
That's not happening much.
Most of them I know and they have season passes and they have the right to be there.
Right.
But still, your, your, your golf administrator should be there in the clubhouse.
Yeah.
Cause he's missing too. Cause somebody will come there and go, ah, I need balls, oh, I need tees. Well, they're closed. Well, I gotta borrow them from my buddy then, uh, instead of buying them. So it'd be a good idea to have them there. Almost, you almost need to be there when it, when it's daylight, you need to be there. And go home when it's pretty near dark.
What are you, are you seeing that in the appendix?
Oh, it's, it's Independence Day, page fourteen. We're, we're at a minimum hours of operation of course. Close this fourteen, come in with weather. You know, if it's a rainy day, it does close down, go home. Well, I'm, who knows, like this one I have here may be a little bit different. Yeah. I mean, the earliest we're asking him to be there is at seven o'clock. By the way, thinking that's an hour late. In Aug, in June and August, August thirty first to closing, we're at eight thirty. No, that may be a little late too.
Sometimes there's still frost on the course there though.
He better be there. That's why he's there.
That's why he's gonna be there.
Cause he's gotta monitor that course. If there's frost, he's gonna stop people from playing. He's gotta be there to monitor that. That's even more important in the summer hours. If people out there are driving their carts around and playing on frost, you, you kill grass. Okay, I'm done. Already said that once, didn't I?
I think the big areas that I need, staff needs direction on is regarding the, the base rate.
Yeah.
I agree with staff on a lot of points. I don't see that, I don't see that any of those changes are gonna make it more or less. Even by working to.
I think if you sit down and you go through, um, Scott, Ralph got it. Mike, which Ralph got out there for employees? Three out there mowing and three in the clubhouse, is that pretty much it? Or what's there more than that?
At the most.
At the most, yeah.
Three out there mowing and doing outside work.
Yeah.
And then in the clubhouse, it's usually.
Usually two at a time or one?
Well, one at a time, but it was, they rotated throughout the week, so you'd have maybe a three, three employees. Especially when Julie came back for the, for the summer.
Well, I mean, like you and Michael and, and, uh, Bill were pretty much full time mowing every day.
Just about.
And I'm just trying to run this through my head of how much money it takes for these people to come out and, and. I know it's none of my business, I know, but I happen to know you guys got paid ten to eleven dollars an hour. And you're not gonna, you're not gonna get away with that.
I got eleven, eleven fifty.
Okay.
And there was nobody that was working there that made more than eleven fifty?
Nobody should be making less than fifteen?
That's right. So take that, take that fifty-eight thousand and does that pay the wages of all these people at ten or eleven dollars an hour? Now you go to fifteen to sixteen, is that gonna cover it? Um, maybe not. If that's the idea behind that, uh, opening wage or that stipend or whatever you wanna call it. Yes. That was my only reason for even mentioning, uh, bumping that base rate up. Cause, cause whoever takes it over is gonna, is gonna hit a, it's a pretty rude awakening. When, when you go to pay him fifteen, sixteen an hour as opposed to ten or eleven, that's almost, that's almost a third of yen or more.
Wouldn't people apply for this job, did they look at the contract as it existed already?
Who?
The people that applied.
They didn't have a contract, they don't.
They didn't, they didn't know.
Nope.
This is.
Okay, I just was curious about it because that was one of the first things we were supposed to be doing, so I just was curious if, if it already existed or they knew what they were applying for. So.
That was one of the things I felt, yeah, was really necessary is to make sure this contract's ironed out in a fashion that will get somebody.
That's what I thought, yeah.
If I could address the comment about the contract amount, what it was intended to go for, I don't know a certainty. We have a former mayor here, we also have the attorney here that was there when we negotiated a previous contract with Ralph. My understanding is that contract amount is to offset the cost of his professional services at the course. If he chooses to use that as part of his business plan to pay his employees out of, that's a business decision. But that's not my understanding of how that contract base amount is intended to be set up. It's intended to be compensation for the work that they're doing on the golf course. So the other revenue that the contractor brings in, that, as, as I mentioned earlier, between sales of, um, food, beer, wine, uh, drinks and, uh, the driving range, that is the revenue that I would think would be there to offset the cost of his employees. As I said, again, I don't know how the contractor uses this to run their business.
And those are, and those are recorded as separate business costs.
Yes.
So, and that's how it was actually reported every year, I think, too.
Well, yeah.
Separate business costs, profits and loss.
I mean, yeah, you can. Contractor has a choice to hire as few or as many employees as he wants, so.
That is expensive.
We would know, we couldn't know what, uh, that would be.
Well, that's why I kind of ask.
When they give us the profits and loss statements, which they do.
About what it takes.
We've not received for the last two years and, and of course it's not the fifteenth of November yet, so we haven't received this last year.
But we were receiving them. I remember getting the profit loss statements.
We did until twenty twenty.
Right. Yeah, so, and the wage was separate from, the wage was separate from the, the, the wages of everybody else. It wasn't part of the profits and loss. It was separate.
I think.
It was entirely separate.
No, I don't remember how that all.
Yeah.
And, and as far as what, how the money slides around in that golf course and pays people and, 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 you know, that's up to the contractor.
Yeah, cause we have no idea.
We have no idea what he's using to pay with. Is he taking that fifty-eight thousand going, okay, I can afford to buy these guys for this much time?
Yep.
I don't know if that's what he's doing and that's his business.
But I, I think you can't then say that that money that we pay him is then used to pay his employees and it's not adequately pay, we're not paying him enough to do that. I think that, then there lies the, the fallacy of that argument is, is that, so I think you have to assume that the money that we're paying him is simply to be the professional, he or she, out of the site or the golf course, that's the city's contribution for that person's services. If you consider anything other than that, then yes, I think you can consider the fact that it's been not properly paid to account for those. But we've never done that in the past and I can't imagine why we wouldn't now, it's a business decision made by a particular.
Well, when the contract was negotiated, wasn't all this taken in? I mean, as far as what his base pay was, what he gets in from the concessions and everything. So he knew what it was gonna take to hire people and he okayed the contract, he signed the contract. And I would think.
Yeah, I just wanna be careful that we're not going backwards and looking at what the contractor's doing, that looking forward. How do we, how do you guys wanna structure the base pay? I've given you, you know, there's two different scenarios. Uh, one thing I didn't cover and it's part of the packet, it's towards the end of the packet, is the profit loss statement as well. I think the last page includes the total paid to the contractor, which includes the contract, um, contracted amount, which you see went up from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, and then the commission rate. So when you look at those sums and we take out the real grinding, that was additional service that the contractor at the time did. And it's not necessarily going to be something that happens going forward, so I think we need to take that out with consideration. You look at the ten year average of about eighty-seven thousand that you could potentially look at. In one scenario, we do a hundred zero, you don't do a incentive based contract where you are splitting those proceeds. You could simply look at a ten year, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, eighty-five thousand, I forgot, I took out the real grinding. Would be that, that would be maybe a hundred, within the city would keep a hundred percent of those sales at the golf course. But I think if you do that, you disavant, you disadvantage to a certain degree that interest of wanting to get play up. But that said, that could be an opportunity. Of course, uh, you have the current split eighty-twenty or you could do some other.
And that be a city twenty contractor?
Eighty city, twenty contractor.
That's great.
And that is, that is after, we did, they did confirm that is after taxes are taken out. So I think the contractor represented to the city staff that somehow he's paying that. If he is, he's doubling up cause the city's also paying that, so.
Mike, you'll figure that out in here.
But the city pays the sales tax that we take on the play out there, it's built into the rate. And that rate is then, um, when it, we receive all of those proceeds, we take out the sales tax and then we split the proceeds eighty-twenty and cut a check to the contractor in the amount of that eighty-twenty split. But it was represented to staff that somehow he was paying that. Now, I do know that there's been some concern over, uh, fees related to, uh, credit card fees. And, and that does, he does pay that. And I do think it's worth acknowledging that if the contractor's paying those three percent potentially, uh, bank fees or bank charges, that the contractor could increase, could at the sale, point of sale, charge three percent more of, of whatever that bank charge is to repeat that cost. That's what we do here at St. Hall when we, when we have to charge, uh, when we get charged those costs for somebody that's come in and pay maybe electric bill or, or some other service. So I think that's a reasonable thing to address within the contract. But I did wanna make clear, cause it was presented differently to staff, that somehow he was, um, actually getting much less than twenty percent because he was paying sales tax. And if he is, you know, that.
He shouldn't.
He shouldn't, yeah.
And that's pretty common anymore to pay a two or three percent fee when you use a credit card at a business to cover their.
Well, it's the whole reason we had the, the rate set, I remember, so if somebody pays cash or not. Right. It's just, yeah, but if you're paying with a card, it doesn't matter.
Right.
Or remainder.
Yeah.
I don't think Ralph realized if he could even do that and get away with it.
Well, he couldn't probably under this contract, but.
And that caused him, he said, right, the six thousand dollars last year.
We should probably.
A bunch.
Can we, does that have to be in our fee structure or does that have to be?
I think we'd need to address, uh, Andrew, hey, I'm looking to you, I know you probably have to get going, but, um, we would need to say that in the fees and payment, maybe under the, uh, agreed fee is that they can pass along any big charges to the, at the point of sale. I think that's the key, is at the point of sale, it has to be passed on and not.
Right.
Sometimes.
You need to make it also clear to the customer about that.
That's a decision, that's a decision that the contractor would do, that's a decision he can pass on those costs of that four. That way they would be the one acknowledging at the point of sale, what that fee is.
So this contract would have to say that he has that right.
I, I think it gives him the latitude to do that.
Yeah.
It's his choice whether he wants to do it.
It actually won't, has to say it though in here, we can't just assume it. And I was looking at, uh, contract amount in twenty nineteen is fifty-one thousand and twenty twenty went to fifty-eight thousand. Correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, in always in years before, you, the employees that the contractor hired to work for him, he would give them a season pass to, as kind of a bonus for working there. And, and it always just kinda skated. And I know Dave, you've caught that and said, we can't do that. So you have to pay for him, so we're gonna up you, up your pay from fifty-one to fifty-eight. That's how it went from fifty-one to fifty-eight. He's having to pay for those passes now. So that's not really what I would call a pay raise. Cause it was kinda like, uh, I'd have to call it more like a good old boy. Back in the day, we gave everybody that worked for us a free pass. And just, here, just hand it to them. And there was no accounting for it. And, and thanks to Dave, you got, made him account for it, but you did compensate him so he could still do that. Okay. I just wanted that clarified, so, so that fifty-one to fifty-eight isn't really a bump.
Well, that would be a choice of that contractor.
Yeah, it's, yeah, yeah, that's true.
Again, you have to, you have, the numbers have to work no matter what. I mean, logistically, you can say you wanna pay somebody a hundred thousand dollars, but if you don't have the money to do it, then you can't do it. So, uh, reality is, is that increase was to offset some additional costs.
Logistically, we don't have a lot of, we can increase it.
I, so my opt, your options are increase the play or increase your cost to play. And I can tell you that there was a number of years when, when, even when Dave was mayor, that we looked at, um, the increasing of the season passes and it was really pushed back heavily that we not do that. It wasn't up until recently that those increases happened. And it came at kind of a pushing of the current, the former mayor that stepped down to, to address that and, and which that happened. But that said, I think we lost a lot of ground in being able to add additional money to a contractor to pay them that because we weren't asking for that at the, at the, the golf course. So I, you know, I, I'd look to council to say, if you're going to increase the rate, you have to increase the cost. There's not money left at the end when you look at that. If, especially as we know, and I've, and I've talked with, um, members of council about the issue of making some significant investments out there to the golf course. There's, there's simply no way to do that the way the current revenue streams are.
Yeah.
And I say that very blatantly, there is no money. And any grant money that you do receive, if you, if we are so lucky to get typically are reimbursements. So that means you still have to have revenue.
And there are improvements out there, maybe made. I'd like to go on record as saying right now, um, we can't get a grant from Water Conservation District because we have a encroachment on our property that hasn't been dealt with. And it needs to be dealt with. We've been talking about it for two years now and it needs to be dealt. Cause we cannot get a grant until that property encroachment is repaired, it's something is done about it.
I have no idea what you're talking about, so.
Well, there's, uh, on the, on the golf course, at the top where it goes up to, uh, uh, what is that street?
Funkhouser Road.
Yeah, Funkhouser Lane. There's a house up there built that encroaches on the golf course property. And it, it isn't much, but it's an encroachment. And according to, um, Water Conservation, they won't give us a grant to do anything out there until that is repaired. We have to satisfy that encroachment in one way or another, get it done before we can move forward with any grants to like, uh, say repair water systems out there.
So how, how will you, we're dealing with it, probably the house is there, you gotta move the house?
No, 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 no. It's, it comes across their yard and it cuts through a lean tube. And, uh, it, it, it just has to be dealt with. Whether we can do some kind of land trade, now this, now you're getting into legal.
I, and I think we're getting a little off topic here. I wanna, I wanna redirect from some air we could. I, the, the problem that the councilman is making council aware of is an issue that's been prevalent on Funkhouser Road in Southland County and it's an encroachment issue. And we can certainly, and I've talked to, to Brian about this over a number of years and it is something that needs, we need buy-in from council and the golf committee in order to tackle that, but that's another issue at another date.
Well, that doesn't have anything to do, so let's just move on. I just had to say that.
Well, yeah, but I just know about it, I didn't know anything about it.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a prevalent issue out there with, with somebody who knows of the issue and the process to go through a land exchange is too costly for us. So we probably have to go through, ask the legislature and the legislature, which won't go well.
You see, yeah, the, I, I was.
If we're gonna discuss it, we probably should on it.
Yes.
I would, I would.
Yeah, yeah, let's, yes.
I would have.
But it, it needs to be agendized, so we can discuss it though, it hasn't been yet, so. Anyway. it hasn't been yet, so, anyway. I'm worried upward.
So at this point, the green, area of discussion is subsection E of, of section five, contracting amount. And again, I, I don't know how to advise you of this except for to say, I'm not sure how you can increase it, unless you say something I don't, but the numbers don't buy. We did increase five percent this last year, we have gone up by percent, but five percent isn't making up much ground when you think about disinformation itself, so.
Right, that's the pillar.
Well, we did pretty good this year, it'd be nice to be able to do that every year, but that, you can't count on that. You can't count on that.
That's why we need to be careful about increasing that.
It isn't a relatively, not, I won't even call it an anomaly, because the reality is, is we just didn't have any investments to make before the end of the fiscal year. We are making, and likely council will see fairly soon, an ask to invest some of those dollars back into the golf course and those proceed dollars in the form of capital equipment purchases, so, to the tune of potentially fifty thousand dollars, so when you start to, to think about that coming out, it'll be obviously budgeted in this year's expense, so it'll look like a bad year this year coming up, but we're on the proceeds of the previous year, we're still okay when you look at the total amount, however, you know, that, that, when you still think about those fifty thousand dollar a year investments, there's still a lot left over.
It doesn't change the.
Every time we have an expense out there.
Doesn't change the average much.
Yeah. Yeah, things tend to be expensive.
Yeah, nothing cheap out there.
So anyway, I mean, I just, I just wanted to throw that base amount out there for discussion, and I think your explanation for it Lisa is just fine, and I would completely leave it alone. So I'm not in charge, so, take, take that with a grain of salt.
Oh, we do have on K though, it does say operators shall be entitled to eight individual season passes to allow its employers and principal shareholders into golf course, so we need to look at that on K.
Is it, is it one, six, four?
So we need to make sure. I think it's probably relevant to keep that in there, it's simply because the, according to the former, the outgoing contractor, there is that value added to the employees, and it might still be a decision by the future contractor, so to remove that.
Okay, I mean, just saying that, you know, something to consider.
So the fifty eight really is fifty one?
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Take the good old boy clause out.
Yeah.
And pay for it.
All right.
Pay the toll.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, you know, I did point to the fact that you could potentially go up slightly if you wanted, and that was based on that contractor commission rate, but you'd have to change your commission rate, so, you know, at this point, if you leave it the same, or if you want to bump it up to even sixty thousand, you know, we, we are seeing an increase in cost out there, so we potentially reflect that if you looked at what five percent is over.
That's true.
I thought of the, of maybe sixty thousand, because sixty thousand just sounds better.
Sounds better than fifty eight. Well, it's, it's, it's something.
And it's not a huge increase.
The, the five percent of that amount is about sixty one thousand.
Sixty one?
We did go up five percent.
And we did go up five percent in rates the last few years, we, I think we hit three percent and five percent, so potentially we're probably safe in essentially keeping that same average at the end, about seventy five hundred, if the long play stays.
And should there maybe be something in the contract about this base rate being reflected each year with five percent raise, if council agrees?
I don't know that we can do that with how, how.
How the contract's written.
Well, no, how it all functions, so if we have a really bad year.
Can we take away five percent?
I don't think it's necessary to put that in the contract.
Yeah, you're right, never mind, yeah.
But I think, yeah, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
All right, what was, what was it that you were okay with, I'm sure you're?
I'm okay with sixty.
Sixty or sixty one?
I want, I need a sixty.
Sixty. It's good for me.
Yeah, let's, let's, we may have to make a motion on that.
This is the contract we're talking about.
Yeah.
So there's no motion paid.
Yeah. I think we're done.
I mean, the thing it is, we just need to get this contract hammered out, so we get this thing advertised, that's the big key. Yeah, get it, get this done, or we get this job advertised and get some people coming back in with resumes and all that fun stuff.
But we need to go with that section, I mean, there's not going to do that.
Yeah, we still got, we still got number two to go through.
Is there any more heartburn anywhere in the contract that we're looking at? Any more comments you have?
What did I say, I'm sorry, I put out my bullet point, you see? The electric costs, do you want to leave that the way it is?
I would, yeah, leave it alone. You made a real good point about that.
And then the last one was the contractor's opinion about to breach a contract, there's no reason to remove that.
I don't know what that even.
You brought that up at our meeting.
Well, I know in the, in years past, we've had a contractor start, and then I believe they leave and they'll, so I think we'd be somewhat reluctant to.
Well, the reality is, is it wasn't a valid argument, but I wanted to make sure council knew that in that, if it came up, that that was an issue, that it's not an issue, it wasn't the previous contract, and it's far back, like, fine contracts, it was in there, so, unless I misunderstood about the section that was new, that's the section he referred to in my notes.
He referred to me about something about him not having the freedom to say what he wanted to, like on Facebook or whatever like that, if he was referring to the golf course.
There is a social media.
There is a social media, but it's, but it's about remaining professional.
Yes.
I did, I did remember.
He can say what he wants as long as it's not derogatory towards where he's employed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, that's standard.
And to make sure that it's put in the social media post that this is the city's monitoring municipal golf course, and he's just an employee, so.
Right.
So the, Mike, Mike had made a comment about the need for us to address within the contract, winterizing the pump.
Well, actually, what I was thinking about is, I, I know that, you know, I talk with Ralph a lot about the pumping system, and I don't know that everybody understands it completely, but the lower pond has a floating pump, and one thing that Ralph does that would be nice to incorporate into the contract would just be keeping the aquatic weeds down so it doesn't get into the pump system. And it also creates a problem with the sprinkler heads, because eventually that algae and other stuff ends up in the sprinkler heads, and he has to maintain it, so it's something if we, you know, maybe alongside that, if there's any, you know, approved aquatic weed killer that, that would keep that down, because I think he does that already, and I thought it'd be nice to, he does it, but it's not necessarily in the, in the contract that I know ever could see, so I thought that might be a good addition.
Is that on his own?
Yeah, and so I think it'd be good to kind of memorialize that in a way, so that, that it kind of protects the pump system and the sprinkler heads, and then the other part is the upper, the upper pump that delivers water to the irrigation system has a basin that, if you get gravel and other material in there, it could get up into the pump and ruin it, and that's a, about a thirteen to fourteen thousand dollar pump system, and the lower one is about the same, so, you know, maybe some featured in there where we would work together, the city would work together with the contractor to clean out that basin each year before startup, just back it up.
So is that something, I, I, I hear what you're saying, I'm not picturing it, is it a, is it a concrete well?
It's, it's actually, you know, a pretty shallow set vertical line shaft pump that goes down five feet into the water, and it's in a, basically a, a round concrete basin.
Okay.
And if we could pull the cover off that once a year and just vacuum out the gravel and stuff like that, that'd protect the pump system.
I E, vacuum truck.
Right, right, so if we could just coordinate that, that each year, that would help protect the pump system and keep the screens clean.
That's a good end of year thing to put in.
It says.
There's something about removing, oh, for removing the lower pump at the end of the season.
Okay, yeah, that, that's not.
But that's not, that's not what you're talking about.
Product screen.
Right, yeah, I'm talking more maintenance, and, and there's probably other, other pump maintenance that would be good, that I could create a list for, if it's not.
I mean, you can tag that onto the contract without, I mean, it doesn't have to be done tonight.
Right, right, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Well, I'll get it in here so at least we're like, or something.
Yeah, or just put it in there, that Mike is gonna put in.
Because I think Ralph certainly doing a lot of this already, so I just thought it'd be good to carry that through.
It does say, it does say in D duties that, that all routine labor and maintenance on the golf course premises, including the number to what's in appendix A, so.
Okay.
It is kind of overall covered, but.
Okay, I just thought if we could add that.
What I'd like to see is probably an appendix put in there for end of year closure items that you want to see happen, and it's just a reminder for him to remind you that vacuum truck needs to come out, we need to clean this, and we need to hold this pump, and.
Yeah.
Because a lot of that stuff he probably can't do on his own.
Right, no, I understand.
He has to have help, but he needs to remind you guys, you know.
Sure.
Just like, bathrooms need to be winterized and da, 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 all that kind of stuff.
Opening, closing.
Yep, opening and closing.
Opening and closing type things.
Yeah, that's all I have.
I did, I just put in here, the contractor shall be responsible for maintenance, maintaining the city pumping system, the borough is associated with closing this, the water brings drainage around the pumping system, in addition to the operational work with city staff to clean the associated shaft housing, the pumping system, it shall be cleaned at least once in the season. I mean, I sure.
You could call it a pump basin.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the technical terms. Okay.
Thanks.
It's in there, okay. So with that, if council doesn't have any other changes, we, oh, I did want to let you know that in talking with the attorney, we did add the provisions for self-interested contracts, so that's now a new section sixteen, and it says pursuant to Idaho Code eighteen thirteen fifty nine, no person, and this is in a draft, this came to me, she just gave it to me today, no person related to the mayor, any member of the city council by blood or marriage within the secondary middle of contract with the city to be paid for with public funds in the event that a member of the contractor's family within the secondary holds the office, so mayor or council during the period of his contract, his contract shall become void immediately. I asked her if she could get that to me so that you could see it tonight.
Now, is, is that, you read that pretty fast, and.
I'm sorry.
I totally don't understand what you're talking about.
Might be good to try. So this is the provisions for self-interested contracts, this has to do with Idaho Code statute, and this is the section of, I apologize, the attorney had to leave, she had a, had a personal matter, a family matter she was taking care of, but the, as she had mentioned to council previously, this was that section, and I had to put it in here for tonight so that you could see that. So this would be a, you know, to prevent anybody who has a contract with the city and then a family member becomes, takes a place of leadership, they would then have the contract become null and void.
Has, some of that has to do with the order of things that happen, so if you had a contractor at the golf course hired, then, you know, if it was my son, and he was working at the golf course, and I got the city council position, that does not affect his job, period. He does not lose that position, says it right here in the I, AIC book, it's right there.
Say that again.
So, say, say, I was, I was, my son, my son had a job with the city, okay, then I came on as a city councilman, it does not affect his job, period.
Not according to what Andrew Cape Lewis gave.
Nope, right here in the AIC manual.
Or what AIC actually told us, so, because, because we have been, because we have been told otherwise, I mean, because we have, so I think that it's necessary for us to take our, I think it's necessary for us to take the advice of our attorney.
Even though, I, they actually write it out in writing, it's specific, they talk directly about it.
I think it's important for us to take the advice of our attorney. So, because it's very specifically laid out for us.
Yeah, right here.
By our attorney.
Right there, it's laid out by this, by Boise, by the state of Idaho. I would think, I would think our attorney maybe should look at this and, and take a lesson from this.
And I, I will say, I know she has, and I believe she has in writing provided you with her opinion on that, so, yes.
Did everybody get this?
Yeah.
From Anna K, yeah. Did you get it, Brian, from Anna K?
It went to all council members, so, yes. So.
Well, so it's a, so it's just, it's just an opinion.
I haven't.
It's not a, it's, it's not an actual law, because the law is written right here in this book.
And we pay our attorney to interpret the law and render an opinion as to what we should be doing, and every meeting I've ever went to since I've been on the city council in the last twelve years, when you're listening to the attorneys for AIC, the biggest thing they say is consult your attorney and follow what they say.
Okay.
Well, what, what she, what I see here, it says, it does quote the code, it says, however, Idaho Code eighteen thirteen fifty nine three reads as follows, no person related to a mayor or member of a city council by blood or marriage within the secondary shall be appointed to any clerkship, office, position, employment, or duty with the mayor's or city council's city when the salary, wages, pay, or compensation of such appointee or employee is to be paid out of public funds. That's Idaho Code.
And it says, while the language of the statute is not equitatively clear, that employment or duty extends to a contract situation, the Idaho Attorney General's Office has provided an opinion that a contract does qualify as employment or duty for the purposes of this prohibition. As such, anyone who's related to the mayor or a council member by blood or marriage within the secondary degree would not be able to hold a contract position under the historical structure of that position. So. So it's pretty clearly laid out for us about what we have to do.
And it's kind of moot at this point because we don't have.
We don't have anything.
We don't have anybody that is attempting to get a job, because we don't have.
But that said, I think it's important to have it in here, so anybody looking to apply, understand the implications.
I agree with that, so, but I don't think it's anything that we need to worry about at this point, I mean, it's in the contract, and our attorney thinks it should be in the contract, so I follow our attorney's advice. Each council person can come to their own conclusion.
Always follow the advice of your council.
So really quick, before you're, before we're done with subsection one, considering the contract, would be any changes or suggestions or discussions about the overall contract? Of course, we still have to go in and fix a few things, like, as mentioned, the section regarding the methodology, so following, making changes at the golf course, so that's in there, and I will definitely work with the attorney on making sure that language is done, and cleaning up some of these other reasons. So with that, council's ready to make a motion on, you know, the, the contract of the contract as presented or amended tonight, and as will be amended in the future, we can start to put together the next section, which is how we're gonna go out for selection, and I'll work with the mayor on making sure that that contract is more tightly put together and agreed on between staff and the. And I'll work with the mayor on making sure that that contract is more tightly put together and agreed on between staff and the attorney. And granted, remember that we may end up even negotiating terms of this too as we get to that point at, at what we'll pay. But at least from the standpoint of receiving applicants, this will be roughly put together, probably more than rough, but. With that, stand for any questions or what you'd like to do next this year?
Well, if anybody would like to make a motion.
I make a motion that we direct staff to put together the contract as amended during this meeting.
I second that.
Motion been made and seconded, Ron?
Excuse me, yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Moving forward, item number two, discuss and consider process for selecting the next golf course manager for Mire Lake Golf Course.
So, as was discussed last time and tabled, was the idea of how council would like to look forward with the selection process. I didn't address this in my memo, so I'll just do it verbally. But there is, as part of the packet, there was a Mire Lake Golf Course Golf and Operation Manager job description, essentially a job announcement. This would be what we would be posting along with the contract as kind of an experiment, or future statement, excuse me. And at this point, there were some discussions I had individually with council members as well as the mayor that were suggesting removing some language and as well as the golf contractors. So that's been, that has been done. At this point, unless the council sees any need to address anything further, I'd be happy to stand for any questions or discussions. Essentially, along with this, we would post the draft contract, and we will see either an RFP, we would see, I think we decided on that, sorry. We go up for call for applicants.
Call for applicants.
Excuse me. So we would go over the call for applicants for this job. And I do want to make note that as, was when we met with the golf contractor, was we reiterated a number of times that, that the golf pros would not be interested in this contract or this position based on the way the contract was laid out. But my understanding was that the city was flexible with that and wasn't necessarily hunting for a golf pro, although that would certainly be nice. We were lucky to have that over the last twenty years, but may not be going forward. So that said, it does take out references to the requirement of the need to have a golf pro associated with the job, I believe. I think I took that out. So with that, I'd be happy to answer your questions. I will say that I believe I had this, usually we've gone four years, this, I did include it to go by years, so that will need to be reflected in the contract as well, but.
So you're saying five years?
Five years.
Okay.
I have one question about the manager responsibilities. Would they also have to have a high school, they have to have a high school golf program? So would they also have to have a contract with the school district?
You know, that's a good question. That, this was pulled over from the RFP, so.
Right.
You know, you might, we have a member of council that was on that committee, maybe you can talk to that.
I know that Ralph had made mention about the high school program. The high school sponsors their own program. The golf course does not sponsor their program. And they bring their own coach, and they have a stipend for whoever wants to coach. They lost their coach two years ago, and Ralph took it over. And, but it's not a responsibility of the golf course manager to have a high school team. It's the high school's.
I think it's realistic to, to strike that then.
Yeah, it's the high school's responsibility and, and, yeah. And if they can talk that pro into coaching, so be it. But they've always, in the past, brought their own coach. And Ralph would work with them to.
I was gonna say, that's good, because that's a tough thing to put into.
It is, you can't, you can't really, yeah, you can't really do that.
Again, I was taking right from the RFP, so.
Yeah, you're right, it was in there. But that was another fault of the RFP. But.
I think it would be awesome if they did work in conjunction with the, with the district, because I think it's been a fantastic partnership at the same time.
Oh, Ralph always has. He's made sure that, I mean, he'd take those kids out there before the season even starts, and he hauls mats out on five or six and lets them hit balls, and then they gotta go fetch them, and they come back and hit them again.
Well, and the summer golf programs were really good too. That's how some of our kids got involved in golf, so.
And the rates for the kids, I mean, like sixty dollars for a pass for the season, stuff like that, it's just great.
He also had a team, and the kids that took them down, Stacey win it one year, and then come second next year, and they're still there.
They stand a good chance this next year too. So, it's paying off. Ralph was a large part of that. And I'm sure the next person we get can be encouraged to be a large part of it too. There's no reason why I'm, but I don't like putting it in the contract. I mean, you can't, you can't do that.
I think that's a good catch, I didn't.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you, I was gonna, I had to highlight it, I just didn't get to it.
So the, the thought would be, at this point, you're making modifications, adjustments to the announcement, job announcement, and then the process for selecting would need to be identified by council tonight, so that staff has clear understanding of what that process should be. I, I don't mind providing my recommendations, mayor, if you'd like. I don't, I can provide that, otherwise I'll recommend that for you.
I would like to hear your recommendation.
My recommendation is, is that we leave it strictly executive level, meaning it's under the mayor's provision to put together that committee no differently than we do our hirees for any other position at the city, and that be his choice as to who he wants to put on that committee.
I know that last time we hired a golf course manager, it was city council, it was one city council member and the golf committee. It wasn't a, it wasn't a steering committee that was put together, it was the golf committee. I was on it, Cal Russell, it was five of us. I was actually involved in that, but.
This committee would not, what, what are some of the, the either positions or, as they are with the city now? We talked about this committee, or if you want to call it that, that will be looking at resumes, et cetera. And, and you said you had some recommendation keep it.
Yeah, I believe I put that in my last memo or email to council.
I saw that, so why don't we, why don't we talk about that and, and maybe come up with what that committee's gonna look like, and maybe design it.
My suggestion, if I recall, and I don't have my memo in front of me or email in front of me, so apologize if I don't get it exactly right, was that the mayor would to appoint, or put on the committee, a member of leadership, which he would represent leadership. And then there would be a member of the staff that would work with the golf contractors, so either the city mechanic or the city street department personnel. Someone from the executive staff, so somebody from the appointed side of things, so myself or the attorney, and the, I believe, somebody from the golf committee, and maybe somebody from council, but I thought that was, that was suggestive.
What, what about just somebody from general public?
Oh, yes, and there was, there was a suggestion that maybe looking at somebody outside, you know, that maybe had less connection, maybe was just looking at kind of from a standpoint that nobody else really saw, so somebody from the public, general public, that might be of interest of serving in that capacity. I, obviously, the more, more people you pick, the harder, you know, your, your process becomes to selecting it. But they would all make their recommendations to the mayor, and the mayor would come forward with their, with the recommendation of who that person would be and negotiate that contract and bring it to council for authorization to sign. So it happened all administratively.
I think in the interest of, we should do something like that, rather than have a committee, a committee or build different ones. We are just doing that straight, exactly.
First, great.
Is that your motion?
I'll make a motion that the, I have the golf course manager administratively through the mayor, mayor's appointed.
You, you can, you can decide if you want to leave that to the committee fix, but if you want to be specific, you can as well.
Say that again.
I'm gonna leave it to the mayor's appointed group, group, I don't really want to call it a committee, James, yeah.
I mean, if I could read that back to you.
Sure. If I can just say it again.
I had down that Adam, or the councilman Arthur recommends selecting the next golf contractor by executive committee set forth by the mayor.
Sure. That's a lot cleaner than mine.
I second it.
Motion been made and seconded, Brian?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
Adam, Ron?
Yes.
Being no further business, we are adjourned.
The record is like a six.